I'll call the meeting to order. If everyone would stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm also going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting tomorrow. I have a meeting Zoom as well as in person. Selectman Hall is in person, Campuchino is in person, and Dr. So-Ronfis is on Zoom.
Aye.
To mention that besides the three finance committee members here, Catherine Fornia is also on Zoom.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Catherine.
Up right to review discussed act. FY '22 reserve fund transfer requests. We have a request for $8,000 for consultant for the certification, revaluation, real estate, and commercial property from the reserve fund to pay for that. Give the Board of Selectmen a chance to speak to that if they have any opinions on the matter.
I support this, taking the money from the reserve. I support it at the end of each special town meeting. This is a little different, it's not the same law article. We're asking that instead of raising appropriate asking that it come from reserve account. This is something that's necessary. We're not going to be able to set a tax rate next year if we don't have this done. So I know I'll speak for myself, but I think I can speak for everybody else. Nobody likes taxes. I get it, but we need to pay bills. Everybody likes to have the snowplow and buy the apartment and police department and everything else. So I'm supporting this. Selectman Hall.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to you would like to make a statement on behalf of the Republican Town Committee on the issue of this transfer.
I'm going to hold that because I'm asking right now for just from the Board of Selectmen. So after you've had your say, I'm going to go to Dr.
Will allow public input?
Yep.
I don't see it on the agenda.
It's not, but we will.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, one of those mandates, I guess, that we must fulfill an obligation with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With that being in support of this transfer.
Z.
Sorry, the audio, I know I told you before, Mr. Administrator, that the audio was good. It is good, it's just a little choppy, so I can't hear 100% of everything. But I support this. I think the implications are that this is something that the state requires. I do respect that people did not support it at town meeting. Unfortunately, this is something that I think if we were not to do would have broader implications, negative implications for the town. We have a good bond rating right now. We've worked really hard as a town to come together so that we are able to afford the things and the services that people have come to expect. So I support it. Again, I do understand that people did not support it at special town meeting, but this is something required by the state, so.
Does Selectman have any authorities, Board of Assessors?
Yes, Mr. James. This has been stated tonight, this is a requirement of the Department of Revenue. We are obligated to do it. When it was defeated at town meeting, I believe it was defeated because people didn't understand what it was for. And I think it was, we got to cut something, so let's knock this one off. That's not an unusual thing to happen, but in this particular case, when the article was defeated, I said to Mrs. Boragad, don't worry about it, we've got to go for a transfer from reserve. We are obligated to do it. If this money is not transferred, Department of Revenue will be notified. They're just going to have an offset against our aid. And they're going to say, don't sweat it, you're going to do it because we're going to put an offset against your aid. I don't think we need to get the Department of Revenue involved in this kind of local decision making. Having served on the Finance Committee with all three of you, we've had issues that we've had to make hard decisions on. But we've also said, if it's a mandate, it's a mandate. It's not, you have an option not to do it. So I think if this had been explained further at town meeting, it may have passed. But again, if this was something we didn't need as assessors and felt that the town could skip it, we'd have certainly made the case. So as the Board of Selectmen has said, we don't have options on this one. Because if we don't do it, the state will do it for us. And I think the other thing people need to know, and by the way, we will be having vacancy on the Board of Assessors because Mrs. Boragad will fully retire in April. I got to tell the public. You want to learn about government? I am still learning about assessors. And I want you to know, there's a 10 module training you have to take. Two of them you have to do almost immediately because you, you, the new person, have to get certified by DOR. You know, I had to sit at that table and actually set tax rates and do all of this stuff. There is no other department in this town that on practically daily basis is attached to the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and everything we do. I've signed more papers electronically since I got on this board. And I keep saying, did they say it was okay? And the answer comes back, it's okay, all right? But I don't think anyone realizes how closely the Department of Revenue watches everything that goes through the Board of Assessors. So that's why I'm saying we don't need them involved in this. This is local, we can handle it, we've got the money, and we need to do it. Thank you.
So any assessors? We'll open up public input, I guess, Mr. Hall, who did you?
I'll speak. Bill Mello, 1693 Wellington Street, Dayton. So at the special town meeting, Article 23, town voted. I don't think it's our place to be presuming what the voters did or did not understand after the fact in order to second guess the result of the vote. It was not presented as something that was a requirement. The town spoke, we ended up having a reconsideration at the end of the, at the end of the town meeting, and the town struck it down again. Nobody is taking into account that there is some type of a procedural technique that would allow a different budget to be used in order to slip in an item that the town quite plainly said that they did not want. And we should think about what type of precedence we're setting for voters in town. We want our voters to participate. We don't want them to show up, speak, come to a conclusion, and then have it contradicted later when they're not paying attention, which is what I think is happening right now. Thank you very much.
2086 Palmer Street. Thank you for your time. I have to agree with everything that Bill said. You know, it's $8,000. I realize it's dropping the bucket when we talk about the grand scheme of things, all the money that, you know, the town has to spend. I do realize full well that it's a requirement of the Department of Revenue. It should come out, as Mrs. Goulart said, let the Department of Revenue take it out of what's coming back if we have to pay for this. The will of the voters should never be thwarted, period. And they've spoken, and they spoke overwhelmingly when it came up a second time. It was brought up again after the, after all the articles had been gone through, all 40 of them. So they've spoken, and I resent the fact that the implication that was made, that we simply don't understand what's going on. Maybe we don't, but we can't know that. We can't know what was in the hearts of all the voters, as Bill said. We have to, we have to respect the will of the voters. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Sir, can you please repeat your name? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bill Moore, Smith Street, Dayton. I'd like to reiterate what my two friends just said. The town has spoken on this, has spoken clearly. There is, there was another item on the agenda tonight that was taken off for, for dog licensing software. Now, we can make the argument here that, oh, this is something we absolutely have to do, but is dog licensing software something we absolutely have to do?
Not, I got to talk about that.
But the problem is, is that we have departments coming to you saying, let's take money from over here in our reserve fund to do things that the voters specifically said not to do. I reiterate with Mr. Tom had said that, you know, we can't just override the will of the voters. They have spoken, they have spoken clearly. If this is a Department of Revenue recommendation, then we take the lumps because the town has spoken. This committee, the Assessor's Office, the town clerk doesn't get to override the things that are said at town meeting. And as I have been told, that train has left the building. Thank you.
Anybody else? Assessors?
Not a recommendation by the Department of Revenue. Specifically, Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 2A, is what this falls under. I did not say I thought we ought to let the Department of Revenue take a hit against our reimbursements. I said the opposite. This is an in-house matter. It's something we have to do under the law, and I think we should do it. But I will also state, I agree that the citizens of the town of Dayton have the right to voice their opinions on every article and every budget and everything else that comes before us. However, elected officials or appointed officials who know the law and have to follow the law have to speak up and say to the voters, sorry, folks, you have a right to your opinion. But as appointed or elected officials, we got to tell you, there is a law we must obey. And that's what that section is I'm talking about, that talks about interim year adjustments. Now, you all know that eventually we have the full revale, which costs a lot more than $8,000. This is interim, this is what we're looking for. Thank you.
Questions?
I don't have any questions right now. I'm actually going back to was reduced prior to the special. I want to look at something here. What was the article, Bill, in the?
23.
23, thank you.
Would have taken you a while.
If it was.
I'll come back to you. Kevin? Catherine, anything? Any questions, Catherine?
No questions, no.
Okay. Any, anyone else on Zoom have a, have a question, since I've opened it up here? Elise? Yeah, you're on mute, Elise. Wish she's not giving a good speech.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm sorry. I'm having technical problems tonight. I wish I could do that personally. Now, I can say. I, I just wanted to say, I just feel like this is a sneaky way to move some funds around after you've already voted on this stuff. Nobody told us about this again tonight. It's like a surprise. If you need $8,000, we've given you money for the green automobile. You can take out that $2,000, though. You could find the money somewhere. I don't even know, I mean, the tone voted no, and you voted yes.
Elise, we can't, we can't, you're, you're, you're very muffled and muted at this point.
I'm.
There, right there.
Hello?
There you are.
I just want a good voice, my discontent about how I feel. This is kind of a sneaky way to move money around. We didn't tell anybody in town you could vote on again tonight. The only reason it looks kind of sneaky, I mean, why didn't we vote on? If it wasn't a voteable thing. Really sad and disappointing this is happening. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input.
I'm so frustrated.
So, so this, this will be my comment. Prior to the special town meeting, the Board of Selectmen were kind enough to hold an informational meeting. And apparently, well, not apparently, but the information that this is a mandate was not a part of that package. But also apparently, that question was never asked nor that information provided during that meeting so that those folks, and I'm assuming some of the folks that are here who have made comments about this were at that informational meeting. Okay? So we're not here to we're not here to, to, to look at fault or blame or anything in terms of the education process. What we need to look at is do we want to be spending our Board of Assessors' time dealing with the Department of Revenue and the hoops that they're going to have to jump through simply because we won't allocate this money for this transfer? And I think their time is better spent working all through the localized issues than having to worry about the Department of Revenue when we do have a vehicle available to us to rectify the situation. Now, I'm not, I, I am, I am a towns person. I understand the process because I've been on the Finance Committee for too long, maybe? No. 10 years now, Nancy?
Elise.
Somewhere, somewhere in that, that timeframe. So I'll point the finger at myself for not stepping up in, in that town meeting and being, being the one to say, this is a mandate. Okay? And I'll, and I'll point to the other appointed and elected officials for not being able to get that point across. But we have a way to rectify this. It's regardless of the outcome of the meeting and of this transfer, the town's going to be on the hook for $8,000. So why don't we just take care of it now? That's my viewpoint as both a towns person and as a Finance Committee member.
Just to give my, my own opinion also, I do see this as different than, than any other item really on the special or on an annual that would be voted down in that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be, obviously, we can be asked to do anything. But I don't see us passing another item, but this where it's, it's not only required, it is, it's the law. I went on and printed it out today. It's a requirement of the town. We have to do it. If the DOR were to get involved, I mean, it's never happened, but I can only assume in dealing with, you know, big government that, you know, 8,000 turns into 24,000, turns into 480,000 before you know it. And in the meantime, we still haven't set a tax rate, and we're behind the eight ball on that. Well, that said, we'll call, call for a vote with Catherine on, on Zoom. I'm just going to do individual votes as well. You're roach, I vote in favor. Aye. Robert Renan?
I believe we have to put forth a motion.
Oh, you, you do that. We've been talking so long.
I'll make a motion to transfer $8,000 from the reserve fund to the appropriate Board of Assessors' account for the revaluation. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Kevin, aye. Catherine? Aye, okay.
Aye.
All right. Just before we move on and do appreciate everybody coming out and, and speaking on the, on the matter. We, the next item is an update on BP. And I'm going to turn it over to Town Administrator.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So like as many of them, so like as many of them, I got, I got, I actually know the project really. Actually, the BP project evolves by the day. I, 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 I actually, actually at a BP school committee meeting yesterday afternoon, the school committee, I actually voted to change the date of the special election from January 29th, 2022 to March 5th, 2022, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. And the election will be held at DES. So so I believe since 2018, this project had been actually talked about and discussed. However, earlier this year, we really got to know for the first time the place and the financial impact on Dayton. I can, over the next 30 years, based on our enrollment, I got debt service to fund the project if it is approved. I did actually $800,000 per year, which helped increase our revenues. So, so actually, so actually going into FY '22, we only actually had about $700,000 in new revenues to fund what we needed to fund in '22. So so in order to fund the project in the future, if it is approved, we'd like to, I think, sort of a debt exposure. So like we've been working with our financial advisors, really through assessors, we had a meeting last week. So again, again, all this information evolved by the day, but I wanted to give everyone a bit where we were. So on the project and where we could be heading in terms of the finances and the impact on the finances and the impact on our operational budget and also what we're trying to do with capital as well.
Wait, what was the date on the election again?
It changed from January 29th to the 5th of March, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at DES.
All, all precincts will vote at DES?
Yes, yes, all three precincts are voting at DES still, yes.
Okay.
And Mike, you said 30 years at $800,000 a year?
Yes. I see as cast with this, $800,000 a year for 30 years.
Okay.
And that doesn't change based on the number of students? It does?
So, yeah, like actually if our enrollment goes up, then our proportion actually increases as well. So it's fairly volatile, fairly volatile potentially, that's a good point to know.
Did they give us an indication? I want to make sure I don't interrupt anybody or say anything off one of the top. But did they give us an indication on per student, how much that may change with this, with this new school?
So they've updated enrollment projections that are on the BP website. Unfortunately, they don't have, like, I don't have them yet tonight, I'm sorry.
Maybe they're planning on getting that many more students if they do it, and hopefully they're going to spread it out. It won't change too much, but I don't know if that's the case.
I see, yeah. I see, yeah, one of the things that BP is entertaining at the moment, they might have already approved it. So like as all, so it's allowing the town of Free Town to join as a member community, so that will help spread it out a little more.
Yeah.
So as well, like, and that would be the commitment. You know, enrollment percentage that would take away, hopefully, if I can.
Have they already evaluated how many towns might be interested to know what that student count might look like?
I saw it, so it is on the website that I can follow up with the thing.
I'm just curious to know what went in, how many more students they're going to be able to have capacity wise and how it breaks down overall expense.
The new capacity would be 1,400 and change, but I don't know what the old capacity, the current capacity.
If I can interrupt, I thought it was an increase of maybe up to 100 more students. So it sounded like it's a lot of students.
They're big.
And I'm not sure why Free Town would want to join, knowing.
Yes, that this would be the present coming in.
Maybe that optimistic.
Right.
I think I'll turn to Administrator Mullin for writing in that letter to BP as well as the Mayor of Totten, I believe, the Town Administrator in Berkeley sent a letter asking for a change of the date. I guess we didn't have much time, we got a new precinct, we need more.
Therefore, yeah.
And also to give us more hours. Before it was four hours, now it's going to be six hours. Still not enough, but it's better than what we had before, so. And hopefully, the Board of Selectmen is speaking about having an informational meeting on this so that the public can have somebody from BP or people from BP come in and explain to the residents.
Answer some of the questions.
But I can, I'll speak for myself, right? I tend to think that the Board is not supporting.
Yeah. Lot of coin.
Yeah, just from, from an overall cost standpoint, I mean, $800,000.
That's a bid.
Yeah.
That's a bid.
I think Selectman Hall wanted to say.
I attended that meeting. Mayor O'Connell did a lot of negotiating with Bristol Plymouth to make that change happen. With our representative, Edward Dutra, and the Superintendent of Bristol Plymouth. And we will set a date probably through the forum of the Board of Selectmen, and we will have a open forum. And, and the meeting will be dedicated to a forum for all of the public to come talk about finances, talk about the impact it will have on the taxpayers, and also possibilities of mitigating the cost. I know Shauna's discussions with BP led to the reduction of $1 million in permitting fees for that project. They are still open some fee reductions, so. They are trying to be frugal. They understand every community is having the same problem.
Right.
It's a lot of money in a time when people all across this nation are, are struggling for dollars to pay bills.
Do, the two, two questions on this, do we know has the, our local reps, have they been, has anyone discussed anything with them on, or pad add or?
So in terms, so in terms of the letter that the, so in terms of the letter that the Dayton Board of Selectmen sent to the MSBA requesting the exemption, we did CC them. So at this point, I mean, I think we do all them a follow-up to discuss this in the funding of the project. in the funding of the project with them as well.
Okay.
That's a good point, Mr. Chairman.
And do we, has any of the information that we have now on it as, on the website at all for townspeople just to be able to read and get some education on?
So the end of, so the end of last week, we put, so it's not on our website as yet, but it is on our social media and the dytonportal.com. We do, so on this project, we do have a portal on the project impact and the funding impact. And we did link all access to the BP website that has all the backup and information as well. So yeah, you know, get that on our website. That's a good point. Thank you.
And they, did they do have a frequently asked questions and design?
Assessors, or at least from this assessor. As the Town Administrator mentioned, possible debt exclusion. The other concern I have is, as you know, we just had our first budget with capital and operating for Aggie. We need to take a look at, obviously, operating is based on, at Aggie and at BP, the costs for capital and operating are based on enrollment. Unlike Dayton, Rehoboth, it's based on equalized valuation and enrollment. We need to look at Aggie as far as the rising capital cost because what we put in this time was a small amount. All right? The project is just about done. So the full impact of the whatever's going to be borrowed. But, you know, because you only borrow what you absolutely have to, whatever that number is, we're going to have to have, I think, a debt exclusion on that one. We haven't done anything with it yet. About a year and a half, two years ago, I did get in touch with the Department of Revenue and specifically asked, can a member town vote for debt exclusion at a regional voc tech? And the answer was yes. And I said, how about an agricultural high school? And it came back, it should be the same because they look at Aggie as a regional school, even though it's not the same type of regional that we have at Bristol Plymouth. So the number that the Town Administrator put out of 800,000 does not include operating. That's capital. So we're still going to be paying operating costs based on students. And as you know, each year our enrollment at BP has increased. And we've, we've had some increases at Aggie. At town meeting, the question was, when our students are going to the other schools, why isn't the cost dropping at Dayton-Rehoboth? So anyhow, this is just something for the coming fiscal year. Both of these projects, Aggie is, is done. We need to look at a debt exclusion, I believe. Bristol Plymouth, depending upon what happens, if it passes, it's got to be a debt exclusion. I mean, it's such a huge amount of money. You can't have it impact the, the, the regular budget, so to speak, even though it'd be capital. Okay. So just something to keep in mind as we move forward.
I have a question. The past couple of years, we've had questions why our students are leaving and going to BP and all. We understand why, because they have programs we just don't. We're going to invest money like this. Has anybody even studied bringing these programs to DR? Even if we had to put an addition on and spend hundreds of thousands, but thousands of dollars doing that, even in our town?
Yes. When BP was proposed, we had what was known as Dayton-Rehoboth Regional Vocational High School. It was carryover from the, the building that used to be next door. Dayton High School, Dayton Vocational High School. There were a limited number of programs at Dayton-Rehoboth. Structural carpentry, I'll call it finished carpentry, if you know what I mean, automotive and things. Then they get CAD CAM and there was another program, a design program. Anyhow, Dayton and Rehoboth were members of that original district. And it was voted to go in on it. Then the decision was made, you know what? We want to expand the programs at Dayton-Rehoboth and get out of BP. So Dayton and Rehoboth paid an assessment. I think Dayton's share was around, at that point in time, it was like 80,000. This was preliminary stuff. And we paid our share and I assume Rehoboth paid whatever they were assessed. We thought we were out of it. Well, then what happened was the programs were not expanded at Dayton-Rehoboth. People did not vote the additional money to do these things. Then we started tuitioning students out. And then we got into the debacle of the students that went to Tri-County Voc that then of them were from Dayton. That ended up in a lawsuit, as you remember, and we prevailed. When this happened and it was recognized that, Dayton kids wanted programs. They didn't want to travel up there. I mean, the bus ride alone. And we had to provide tuition and transportation to those students under the law. That's when we went to Bristol Plymouth and the superintendent at the time, I believe, was Dr. Gross. I was at that meeting because I was, I was at Dayton-Rehoboth when Dayton and Rehoboth got out of there. We thought we'd get out. In the meantime, Rehoboth also said, we've got students that want voc tech education. They can go anywhere in the state. We could have foot the bill. Let's see if we can get back into BP. Well, by then BP was up and running and building and everything else. And Rehoboth got the word, they would reactivate the membership. We never got out of it. We became inactive members of that regional district. So when we heard that Rehoboth had been able to get back in and could start sending students, I went to that meeting and my first question was, what's the buy-in? And the response was, there was no buy-in. I said, wait a minute. When we were involved initially, we were facing capital and operating. We bought our way out of whatever had been spent at the time, our proportionate share. We have not paid a cent for this building. Are you telling me you'll allow Dayton to come back as a full member? And we haven't paid any capital? And the answer was yes. Because over the years, the school had been taken care of, paid for and all that other good stuff by the people who, who were active members. And the additional buildings that had to be done, if you went in from 140 and through the back, out back, there were a couple of buildings that looked like Cape Cod type structures, you know, the paint with the like you see on the Cape. Those were built by students. And I think they had the, the dental hygienist and I don't know if there was a nursing program. But the additions that they needed for programs, they built out on the campus and they built them with their own students. So to answer your question, yes, it was looked at and it was determined way back then, Dayton and Rehoboth never followed up with the funding needed to expand the program. And also, there would have had to have been additional construction. And so all of this took place prior to the first addition at Dayton-Rehoboth, which was somewhere around 1988.
Yep.
Some 87, 88, when they broke ground for the first addition. But that's how that all came about. The, the same question was raised, quite frankly, when I represented Dayton and we had to vote on the Aggie, new campus and, and all of the renovations. There were a couple of communities that said, we're not sending, we're not, we're pulling out. We're not going to send our kids. And the response was, which I gave, under the law, chapter 74, your students can come to Aggie if they're accepted and you're going to pay their tuition rate and you're going to pay for their transportation. It's the law.
Right.
So, again, it's a majority vote. In that particular case, we had weighted votes, but we had what we needed for the project to pass. Okay? But yes, that was looked at and we tried it. And so as I say, we got back into BP. Dayton and Rehoboth got back into BP without paying capital cost. Because over the years, when we talked about taking additional towns at Dayton-Rehoboth,
Yeah.
we had capital costs all calculated. So that anyone coming in would be part owner because they paid. That was not the case with BP. So it's, I'm looking at all these numbers. You know, I've sat where you all sat. Now I'm looking at the other side, the, the, the side that's got to say, how do we do this? And we got to look at the money and the effect on the taxes and everything else. And while we were talking, I thought of, when Mr. Muller mentioned debt exclusion, I thought, I wanted to bring up the Aggie school because that's a done deal. So we, we really need to look at that for coming up. If a debt exclusion fails, we still got to pay it. All right? I realize it's not the kind of money we're talking about for the BP project, but it's a capital expense for the life of, I'll call it the mortgage. And so that's where we are with that project. Thank you.
Selectman Hall has a comment or question?
We asked a question about DR having programs.
Right.
And what I'm about to say is based on my experience as a member of the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School Committee, also my experience working at Bristol Plymouth, and also working in Taunton High School on the issue of competing programs. When Dayton and Rehoboth joined the regional agreement, it was understood that the town Dayton-Rehoboth would not create a competitive program that Bristol Plymouth already had. It was part of the agreement that we would buy into their program. Example, carpentry, BP has Dayton. The only way that they could create their own carpentry program is they would have to request through negotiations a waiver from BP. That can be done. That has financial ability. But there has to be a good relationship because you have to get BP to agree to it. And where it would come, especially now, is BP has a waiting list of 700 students. And I'm sure there are many students from Dayton-Rehoboth that are on that list. Dayton-Rehoboth could make the argument, especially like a program that DR has had over the years, carpentry, that we have a need that you can't meet. Would you allow us to expand the program? If BP were to say yes, then DR could run, I would call, you know, a competitive.
Subsequent, whatever.
The big advantage is that then the district, DR, would get chapter 74 reimbursement, which is more, is larger than chapter 70 reimbursement. But one, you have to develop a good relationship with BP and they have to grant the waiver for us to have a competitive program.
Unless we weren't in a contract with them, with an agreement, unless we weren't under agreement any longer.
Well, if we leave the district right.
Okay.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, Selectman Hall, would the person being in that good relationship be the town or DR?
It would be the superintendent.
Okay. Any, any questions on, on the BP update?
I have a question. And they had mechanicals. As a competitor with BP, but we actually had that when I was going to DR. To shop the mechanics.
Yeah, and they still do. My son graduated from the automotive. But they, as I understand it, they can't set up a new program to, that competes with, but if it existed.
Where we had it before, it would be considered a new program?
I think if they, once they, if they stop, like I think a couple of years ago, didn't they start a baking culinary? And then they stopped again. So I think if you wanted to pick up something like that again, but BP had it, we wouldn't be able to.
Right.
Without a waiver.
Without a waiver.
Do you have a shop there now and mechanics are?
We still have automotive and.
I'm not sure of all of them.
Yeah.
I know of which shops we have. I don't know which ones we have now. But I think at some point, we have to understand why students would want to leave what we have here to go there. And the better understanding we have of that, I, I think the better we could accommodate and try to keep students in town. That would always be my, my, my interest, but it was just a question.
Yeah. So the only ones we'd probably be able to retain though are those where we have overlapping programs. If somebody wants to go into cosmetology, you can't do that at DR. The only place to do it is BP.
Understand.
So, and, and given, and, and even given that, if there's auto at, at DR and there's auto at BP,
Yep.
and you've got, you're going to, you're going to, if this passes, there's going to be a huge upgrade. Anybody who wants to do auto is going to want to go to BP. They're going to be waitlisted.
Right.
Now there's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's opportunity now for us to get some school choice kids in. But what would we need to do as well to make our
Program?
automotive program competitive?
Yeah.
And that's spending more money. Which, given Aggie's coming up, if BP passes, and we know DR at the high school level, I mean, let, let's face it, those, those buildings are aged.
Of course.
Just, just for our regular students, you know, not, you know, not, not including facilities that we would need to accommodate any new vocational programs.
Right.
Where's that going to come from?
Yeah.
And, and those are just school projects. We've got highway projects, we've got art department projects, we've got police. I mean, this is. And then the library, yes. Thank you, Mr. Dent.
There's a lot.
One, one of the things we always ask during, during the budget of the high school, of the school is, well, one, we ask, we always ask what the enrollment is compared over the last 10 years. And then we always ask them, what, what can you do to make sure more rate creators go from the MS to the high school?
Correct.
So the more that they can retain this.
Right.
But I don't know that we, we generally get an answer on that.
No. They may not have an answer. They, they may not be able to. It might be programs. It could be many things. I don't know the culture of the school. My daughter doesn't go there any longer, so I, I don't really know. And it was more thought provoking, what I brought up. I'm not proposing it, but I'm just wondering if this study was done because it seems more logical to build on land that I own than someone else's. If I'm going to pay a capital expense for somebody else's. If 10 years from now, we pay that money a year and we walk away from it, do they give us a piece of the school back or? I'm speaking rhetorically, but you know what I'm saying.
Probably be inactivated again. The other thing I want to point out to you, what, not competing?
Yes.
When we went back into Bristol Plymouth, again, I was at the meeting with Dr. Gross, who's the superintendent. I think the other selectman that was there may have been Tom Pius, but in any case, these three schools are unique. So if you add on to expand vocational offerings at Dayton-Rehoboth, there's no guarantee the kids in Dayton will want to want them. Again, electric and plumbing and cosmetology. We did expand when I was there. We did expand. I think we got the CAD CAM and there was, the other one was, is a design program. There was also a childcare program that was set, early childhood, because they used to be right next to where, where our offices were. And students participated. The whole thing was, the reason that some of our students ended up in Franklin at Tri-County was because that's where they could get in, which means they couldn't get into Diamond. They couldn't get into Old Colony or think of the other voc schools around, Southeastern. They went that far for the programs. Students from Dayton who are going to BP and Aggie are going there for specific programs that DR doesn't offer. Yes, they have structural carpentry and I think others mill carpentry. And yes, they can take it at DR. But if those classes fill up at DR and we've still got students that want them, they're going to go for a vocational school where they can get accepted. So we don't, we can't cap it and just say, just this number of kids and you've got to take these at, at Dayton-Rehoboth because the law is clear. Vocational students are the exception on where they can go. And the three superintendents going, again, this was before Dr. McGalas and before Mr. Sands, quite frankly. Whenever they looked at, before Mr. Aze, Dr. Aze. Sands, quite frankly, whenever they looked at, before Mr. Azar, before all of them, the superintendents at the time all agreed, the point is, we've got to offer, we've got to have the best offerings for the most kids, all right? So, that's why they've done this with programs. They don't want to duplicate programs, but if the need is there, and kids are not interested in staying at Dyson Rehoboth, whether it's the, if you will, the academic high school or the voc, they're going to look for, whether it's technical training or something else. And that's how this whole thing kind of was put together. But it goes back to when they allowed Dyson and Rehoboth to reactivate. That was kind of a, an agreement unwritten, whatever. But it's carried forward with the current superintendents.
Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Go ahead.
Is there actually a need and a... Children, more kids, teenagers that want the shop and the mechanic?
That's probably a question better asked of the school committee and at a school committee meeting.
She had mentioned that there would be elsewhere for that.
But the school committee would have that kind of information, not here at the finance committee.
Aging of the building, I mean, the high school primarily... So, I mean, we do have, you know, base to really keep that... I think, kind of years... At least better, though. I remember when I was in high, we actually went to the high school in the morning. Often a cosmetology school. So, that obviously added up, you know, financial way of going. I mean, I think that there might be like other...
Not to, typically, the finance committee, yeah, would be... We would be making motions and recommendations based on money being spent, and since there's no money being spent right now, we can't do anything. But just as a resident, just, I would suggest, you know, every, every member of the town, you know, be in contact with school committee members to keep updated on this and, you know, stay, stay informed. It's going to be an interesting couple of months.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a brief thing. But we still have children that are being... As far as the vote goes for the Bristol Plymouth test... It's not going to solve anything. But a priority to me would be taking care of our children that are in trailers.
We did have a capital, there's a newly created capital committee at the high school that we had a meeting last week or two weeks ago, and that was one of the issues that was brought up as far as, it was supposed to, the trailers were supposed to be temporary, and now it's five years later, so it's time to do something. But again, I would suggest, you know, staying on top of the school committee, because they're going to need to push something forward for us to then be able to deal with it, but right now, there isn't.
What we have to work with lately, the school committee, it's kind of a burden catch, you know?
I hear you.
I just wanted to clarify, and I'm not sure if everyone is aware, that that vote that they're going to be taking in March is an aggregate vote and not a majority vote. So, it's going to be the total number of people in all of the communities together. So, obviously, Taunton, which dwarfs all the other communities, will be a community to watch.
Right.
Because Dyson, say, would vote against it, doesn't mean the project will be defeated. And the very most important piece is, if the people in Dyson should vote against it, and the majority vote for it, we are part of that decision, and we have to live with the decision.
So, make sure and get out and vote.
Sorry to get you off track.
Move on to the FY '22 update and '23 planning. Mike, do you have anything on that?
So, yeah, if I could turn this over to a kind of, by the update, who we are.
Thank you. We met last, and we reviewed the year-to-date. Right now, there's no significant issues with year-to-date revenues. Real estate tax collections are generally near the benchmark. The initial trends are indicating the... Especially to inform the fiscal 2023 revenue projections. A lot to really focus on the future, how to trend out our revenues. Attention to the expenditures, spending. And we're coming upon the 2023 budget process, so in the next week or... And hopefully in January, they... And we'll begin the board's select review process. So, we're well underway with starting.
Okay, great. My assumption, from our standpoint, we'll plan on something similar to what we've done the last few years in regards to Tuesdays and Thursdays, and if everyone's good with that schedule.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. You good with it?
Yep. Works for me.
Financial management review?
So, yeah, I just want to provide an update on the financial management review we're doing within the Department of Revenue. We kicked that off two weeks ago. With that, the same day I split my head open, so I wasn't able to join that meeting, but they're coming back, actually, in January. So, so, so all hopes are I won't have any injuries, and I'll be able to meet with them then. But the first time they were here, they met with the town accountant, they met with the town accountant, the chairman of the board of selection. They met with our assessor and our treasurer, you know, and with our assessor and our treasurer. When they came back, the first part of January, they're going to be meeting with me, and they're going to be, they're going to be meeting with the assistant treasurer, with the assistant, with the assistants in the assessor's office. Again, I believe the assistant town accountant, to really get a nuts-and-votes feel of what's As well. And I do believe, and I do expect, that the, at the, at the end of January, they'll be in touch. I'd actually, with the FinCom as well, to meet with representatives from the FinCom. So, that is a big part of the process. But I really think it's shaping up to be a cross-party review. How we structure our finances, how we manage them. I can probably by the end of February, the beginning of March, still be providing recommendations about how we move forward. So, I just wanted to give that update. But I really do, I'm excited about it, the long term is excited. All right, in terms of how we go forward, I think it would be really good to work. So, that's all I want to say, Chairman.
Any questions on that? Did no other take a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Adjourned.
I want to take a motion to adjourn. Second, I'll step down a second, that motion to adjourn. I'll call for a vote. Dr. Z, Pacinoz and I, it passes. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.